So is this supposed to...
Yeah, we're good.
Alright, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Jeff, can you please call a roll?
Mr. Pahavich.
Here.
Mr. McNulty.
Here.
Mr. Bellis. Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Alright, thank you. First item up for tonight is to elect the new Chair and Vice Chair.
So do we have any...
I nominate Mr. Pahavich to be Chairman.
Okay, alright, well, yes? We do both of them together, Jeff, just Chair and Vice Chair, just do separate?
I typically do separate, but...
Okay, alright.
We have a motion made by Mr. McNulty for Mr. Pahavich to be Chair, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Does this vote him, Mr. Pahavich?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce? Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Alright, and Vice Chair?
Start. I nominate Mr. McNulty as new.
A second.
I'm sorry, Commission members, but I will say you'll have to speak pretty close to the microphone so that it'll... I appreciate that. We're not getting longer chords, so.
Is that already live? Can you hear me now or do I need to press anything?
It should be more... It should be better now, yep.
Alright, so did you hear me or do I need to say that again?
A second, Mr. McNulty.
Motion made by Mr. Pierce to elect Mr. McNulty as Vice Chair, seconded by Ms. Harris. Does this vote him, Mr. Pahavich?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce? Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Alright, now on to new business. We're here tonight to discuss zoning application Z O N dash twenty-one dash zero seven. The J L P Orange LLC, east of US twenty-three, south of Orange Center Drive. Just to go over some ground rules here, we will eventually get to public comment. When we do, residents wishing to speak tonight, we'll stick to the merits of the application. And then please limit your comments to three minutes, and we want to avoid any duplication. So if a comment's already been made, there's no need to come up and reinstate it. That being said, Jeff, do we want to start with any staff comments?
Yeah, I can go over the staff report that we had.
Okay.
For rezoning case Zone dash twenty-one dash zero seven, the applicant and owner is J L P Orange LLC. CEO Mark Unger, the agent at Civil and Environmental Consultants of Dustin Doherty. The site is east side of US twenty-three, south of Orange Center Drive, and west of Highfield Drive. Parcel ID numbers of three one eight, three two one, zero one, zero one zero, zero zero zero, and three one eight, three one two, zero three, zero zero five, zero zero zero. Thirty-one point one three acres. The current zoning is farm residential district. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately thirty-one point one three acres from farm residential to a planned commercial and office district to allow for one large anchor tenant, three outlawed commercial buildings, one fueling center, and eight multifamily residential buildings with one centralized clubhouse. The history of the site is currently zone farm residential district and is undeveloped fields and wooded areas. The surrounding areas, to the north is planned commercial and office district and also multifamily planned residential district. To the south is planned commercial and office district. To the west is US twenty-three and planned commercial and office district. To the east is Highfield Drive and planned industrial district. We provided you an overall site plan of the development plan. Under the staff review, density in unit count, twenty attached units maximum permitted in a building with eight proposed multifamily buildings. This would permit one hundred and sixty dwelling units on thirty-one point one three acres, providing a five point one four dwellings... dwelling units per acre. Ground floor residential uses are permitted per Exhibit C. For open space, the total open space provided is forty-three percent. It's around thirteen point four eight acres. For parking, for the parking, one point five parking spaces per unit. They're seeking a divergence requested. The parking space dimensions for the one hundred and sixty spaces in the residential area of this development are proposed to be larger than the eighteen feet long and nine feet wide. For lighting, a divergence is requested for a larger height for light fixtures. All LED lighting shall be in the twenty-seven hundred to three thousand Kelvin range. For signage, a divergence is requested to allow for a taller maximum monument style sign height. Staff is not in favor of the proposed monument style sign. Under development standards, there's no setback distances specified throughout the document or plans. Staff request this to be shown on the revised submittal. Under the divergences, a total of four divergences have been requested. The first one is from Section twenty-one point zero nine, requesting that the minimum building setback from a right-of-way of a Class C be lowered from fifty feet to thirty feet. The second one is from Section twenty-one point one-two E, requesting that the maximum lighting fixture height be raised from twenty feet to thirty-two feet and six inches from finished grade. The third one is from Section twenty-one point zero one, requesting the minimum off-street parking requirement for all other residential uses as noted in Section twenty-one point zero one E be lowered from three spaces per dwelling unit to one point five spaces per dwelling unit. The fourth divergence is from Section twenty-two point zero three E, requesting that the maximum height allowed for a monument style freestanding sign identifying commercial or office complexes be increased from eight feet to twenty-two feet and six inches. Staff held a tech review with some other entities through the township and with the county, and so we have some additional staff comments. Staff request that all elevations facing the west are encouraged to have a front facade appearance. Staff's goal is to make Route twenty-three a more attractive corridor. Number two, identify location or locations of dumpster enclosures for all uses with included color screening details. Also provide the colored dumpster enclosure details for the apartments. Number three, staff questions if any of the existing trees or plantings will remain with this development. Specifically questions along the northern side and behind the large box retail as minimal screening is provided and proposed landscaping plans. Screening shall be provided along all perimeters. Number four, staff does not support the height size of the proposed monument sign as it is a significant divergence request. In addition, electronic messages is prohibited. And B, banner and flag signs are also prohibited. Only allowed for a grand opening, but divergence would need to be requested if the applicant wants these. Number five, only one monument sign is shown on the sign location plan. Staff is questioning if there'd be more around the apartments or at the other entrance along Highfield. And then on the signage schedule, there's no monument sign that's listed. They showed building signs and other signs, but did not show the square footage for the monument sign. Number six, a divergence may be required for the gas canopy sign rendering details. Please include the heights from finished grade to determine if a divergence is required. For all signs on the wholesale club, sign details include heights from finished grade. A divergence will be required. Fifteen feet is the max height for a wall sign. So that will need the divergence as these will be above that. Number eight, staff noticed that the BJ's Wholesale Club building elevations are cut off. The wholesale elevations are labeled incorrectly. The long sides of the building are the east and west, and the short sides should be north and south. Number nine, please provide a color rendering for all apartments. Number ten, staff requests a photometric plan be provided. Eleven, staff does not support the proposed light pole height. Majority of commercial developments along Route twenty-three comply with our maximum light pole height of twenty feet. The applicant has requested divergence for a greater light pole height. Number twelve, for any sections used in this any resolution, please use our current version, which is available on the website. Number thirteen, in informal meetings, staff recommended using Evans Farm as an example text to solely reference. By no means should this applicant copy and paste directly from Evans Farm as this project is significantly different. Number fourteen, please note, once development text reflects the applicant's proposal, more staff comments may arise. Below are a few things to know in its current state. Under permitted uses, staff assumes apartments is the only divergence request. Please clarify. Under conditional uses, it states Section fourteen point zero four and Exhibit D. No Exhibit D was presented in this application. Proceed, no street trees are permitted within any public right-of-way. For D, specify all building and parking setbacks. For E, please provide parking plan showing the number of parking spaces to ensure compliance with parking minimum and maximum standards. F, specify height of all buildings and uses. For G, the signage schedule does not match the sign shown on the plan. H, use Article twenty-one of our zoning resolution for general standards. The text mentions town center. Staff questions the specifics of the town center. From Delaware County Soil and Water District, they are requesting an extended drainage placement down the northwest corner of the property. Comments from the Delaware County Engineers Office. They have required a traffic impact study, which has been submitted and is under review by the Delaware County Engineers Office. And this traffic impact study will include access along US twenty-three. They stated that the development will need to be planted. The right-in, right-out along US twenty-three will need to be on its own separate standalone plant. The Engineers Office would prefer there not be a pathway along US twenty-three as proposed. For the Orange Township Fire Department, they have denied the site plan due to fire hydrant locations. I'm going to state that other comments might be pending, but currently they have denied the current site plan that was part of the submittal plan. For the Orange Township Parks and Operations Department, they have concerns with the access along Highfield Drive and would prefer to be a joint access with the southern property to join with the Walmart entrance and then have access going north from the Walmart parking lot. They are in favor of the path along Orange Center Drive, but the staff would like to see it crossing over to the west side to join along the cemetery and along Fixari's entrance to go up to Hidden Ravines. Then they also requesting that all paths and landscaping be outside of the right-of-way. Regional Planning Commission, they have not submitted comments as they have not heard the application, and they will hear the application this Thursday, January twenty-seventh. That is all that I have for our staff report.
Alright, thanks Jeff. At this time, we're gonna open it up to the applicant to speak about the project, and then if you can, maybe just touch on the four divergences that were listed and whether there's a hardship or what the reasoning is behind those. And then also, please, anybody that speaks tonight, please state your name, address for the record.
Good evening, my name's Dustin Doherty. With Civil and Environmental Consultants. My address is two fifty West Old Wilson Bridge Road, Worthington, Ohio, four three oh eight five. Thank you again for allowing us to come in this evening to speak to you regarding this development on US twenty-three. As Jeff mentioned and discussed in detail, the development is a thirty-plus acre site that's in accordance with the both multifamily and the commercial spirit of the area. As he mentioned, that there is commercial to the south with retail that ties into large complexes, including Kohl's and Walmart, various out parcels, lots of retail, commercial restaurants located on US twenty-three. And to the east, you've got the Chiller, which is a very large parking lot and a big anchor tenant right there. To the north, we do have a stream corridor along the northern property line that we have, but directly to the north, you've got both the dentist office in the northwest corner of the cemetery and multifamily residential that's located north of there. We're proposing something that is in balance and in lieu with the residential properties, the commercial properties in the surrounding neighborhoods. We're extending Orange Center Drive from its current terminus, located on that property line, over to US twenty-three with a right-in, right-out. And we're also extending the connection on the east side into Highfield. We've got an acre commercial tenant that we're proposing. We've also got three out parcels on the west side, approximately five thousand square feet each, and eight buildings for multifamily in accordance with the township's regulations. We are proposing landscaping along the northern portion. We are not touching most of that stream as there's an existing setback there, and we won't be doing any grading. We are proposing two detention basins as part of the stormwater quality and stormwater management for the site. Additionally, we are proposing a landscape screening along the east side as well to be able to provide some buffers there. So with that, you mentioned the variance... different divergences that you wanted me to touch on. Let me pull up that... your staff report real quick if you don't mind. The first divergence is requesting that the minimum setback from the right-of-way of a Class C be lowered from fifty feet to thirty feet. So that is specifically speaking in reference to Orange Center Drive. Orange Center Drive is the curbed road that's being extended from the northern property line over to US twenty-three on the west. And we are proposing to... propose a thirty-foot setback along that road. That road's going to be a two-lane or a three-lane road with a dedicated left turn lane on it. In addition to that, there is going to be grass strips on both sides. It's gonna be a curb and gutter road. There's gonna be a path on one side as well. And so with that, there's a lot of offsets already built into that. The right-of-way that we're proposing is a seventy-foot right-of-way, which is fairly large for a two-lane, two-way road. And so we would respectfully ask that that setback be reduced from fifty feet to thirty feet. The only thing that we'd like to touch on next is the next divergence that we're requesting, which is the maximum lighting fixture height be raised from twenty feet to thirty-two and a half feet from finished grade. So the comment that was provided to us in the staff's report is that the majority of the developments along the corridor are in compliance with that. We went out and took a rod and measured those to be able to understand the existing height poles of everything along that corridor, including Walmart, Kohl's. We've also got Meyer and Giant Eagle. And with a twenty-five-foot pole from the top of the concrete column, we still weren't touching the actual head. And so those are thirty-plus feet, all of them, and that's from finished grade. So we would like to be able to request a light pole that is in... that is in the area as well. That light pole exists throughout that corridor, and we've got photo documentation to provide to help support that. Additionally, the other reason why we're requesting that is the hardship that it creates. And as we've discussed in the past, in order to be able to comply with the minimum light pole fixture of twenty feet, that does gonna require us to install a lot of islands, a lot of islands in that parking lot, reducing parking and being able to provide a lot of impacts as well. So we would respectfully request that that light pole be installed at thirty-two and a half feet, similar to the other neighboring properties along the corridor, so that, one, we can meet the existing photometrics that are required by the standard, and, two, not have to install innumerable parking islands within that lot. The next divergence is requesting off-street parking requirements for the residential be lowered from three to one point five. So that is for the multifamily. And right now, in order to be able to comply with the use in that area, we're requesting that that be lowered down to one point five per unit and to be able to accommodate the layout, the buildings, and the circulation in that area. Originally, we were... we were asked to be able to look at the parking spaces as well. And there is another comment in the staff notes about being able to reduce from the nine by twenty to the nine by eighteen. And that's specifically in reference to allowing the commercial use to have a much bigger space for children, for drop-offs, for safety reasons, for the carts and things of that nature. We were asking a nine by eighteen to be able to be installed for the multifamily. The next one, requesting that the maximum height for the monument sign, identified for the commercial office, be increased from eight feet to twenty-two and a half. This is another request that we're making in specific reference to neighboring properties who already currently have a monument sign. Again, we went out and measured that sign that's on the southern property for Walmart at North Point. That monument sign is over thirty-five feet tall, and it is a large, large sign. We are proposing and requesting something that's two-thirds of that. So we aren't asking for something that's not already there along the corridor. We're not asking for something that isn't already been granted by the township. Specifically as well, we are proposing a hardship with that. And you can notice along Walmart's property that there is a lot more frontage and a lot more visibility on their site. You can see that based upon the number of out parcels that they have. There's the larger corridor to be able to see to that commercial anchor tenant. So we are proposing a sign that's much less than what they have, but we're requesting the divergence from the eight foot for that. There are a few other divergences I can talk through now, if that's okay, that I don't believe are listed in the staff's report.
Yeah.
Okay. One is specifically in reference to the sign height for the wholesale club and the sign height for the fuel station. I believe the code requires a fifteen feet above the finished grade, and we are requesting a sign height for the fuel station on the canopy sign to be sixteen and a half. So due to the canopy being the height that it needs to be for safety reasons, we're requesting a divergence to be able to install a sign on that canopy. And additionally, we're requesting a divergence for the wholesale club sign as well. Part of that hardship is due to the fact that it's set so far back from the existing right-of-way. It's in the spirit and size of the surrounding areas that you can see along that corridor that have existing signs of that height as well. Another divergence that we are requesting is the electronic messaging. I know that the staff's report said that this was prohibited, but there is an existing monument sign right down the road located at Giant Eagle's Get-go's gas station that does have electric messaging. And we would request that electric messaging be added to our sign as well. I believe that's all the divergences at this time.
Okay, that's it. I guess we'll open things up to the board now. Is there any comments or anybody wants to start with your comments?
There's a lot here for those divergences. There is, I mean, some of those things I would like to see in detail. Number one, that parking three to one and a half of the sign, the light height. Jeff, do you happen to know what... I remember we went through this before with the Krogers. You know, the Krogers and the... Do you remember what eventually ended up with that, right? In that parking lot?
I'm not sure what Krogers went, but we can look into it for next hearing.
I would like to look into it because they had a very similar request, you know, for the same reasons, you know, as far as less light poles. And the other thing which I appreciate is, you know, taking a look at some of those early developments that we've done in Orange Township, Meyer and all those. Those were very early, and you'll see zoning as requirements to have been stretched in some areas there. I guess I'd have to see a real... other reasons for... reasons for that. And the same with the... I guess I don't have too much problem if I take a look and find the drawings in here with the canopy sign height because most of that to me is architecture. You know, if it works in, be able to be with the architecture. That's typically a good thing. And a foot and a half on your canopy, you know, I'll take a look at where that goes. It doesn't seem to be much of a problem. The electric messaging, I'm not sure whether Giant Eagle's gas station still has the electric messaging.
It's got a red and a green message on it.
Where's that? It's on their front window?
It's on their monument sign located on the right-of-way of US twenty-three.
Okay.
In the corner of Powell and twenty-three.
What's that messaging for that, I guess?
It's just for the fuel price. That's correct.
Fuel prices. Is that what you're interested in here?
Correct. Yeah, our sign is proposing something very similar in nature to that. And it's a static sign that we're proposing as well, it's not a rolling sign.
And the other thing that we've pretty much tried to have objected to over the years is, you know, we used to go look at those pictures of Morse Road, you know, and all the sign heights and them being everywhere. And you go, boy, we were trying to do anything we could to prevent Orange Township from looking like that. And with respect to BJ's versus Walmart, which is sitting right next to it, Walmart's easily visible because, yes, you have extra signs on Walmart because of the size, you know, on the outside of the building. Isn't that gonna be similar to BJ's as far as their signs? So that an extra sign height really wouldn't be required? Sorry, I gotta probably get a little closer. It's as far close as it gets. Yeah, do a lean in. No, but with respect, I haven't looked at typically all the signage for BJ's, but I suspect that's gonna be highly visible because of what we allow for the size of that building.
That, so that it's the height that's of essence?
The height of the signs on the building?
It's not necessarily the square footage of it that we're requesting divergence from, but it's the height. And the height is because of the architectural aesthetics of that building and how we're proposing to construct it and develop it.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take a look at that. That I typically don't, again, because of architecture. You know, I have as much of a problem. But the other one that kind of shouts at me is the parking space. You know, the three to one and a half.
So I can speak to that a little bit. Part of it is that the nature of multifamily development that you're seeing and the trend that you're seeing right now is not very large families that are being moved into multifamily units. it is not very large families that are being moved into multifamily units. You know, what you're seeing is the empty nesters. You're seeing single, single individuals. You're seeing this new generation, much younger generation, being able to start purchasing these properties. And they want to use these as temporary homes and locations. So the number of parking spaces that you need for those units have dramat- dramatically decreased recently. And that's the trend that you're seeing. You're not seeing the need for three spaces per unit because this is not a single-family home. That this is a, a proposed square footage that we're proposing. I think it's roughly just over seven hundred square foot per unit. So it's not a large unit, a very, very small unit. You, you're not going to be able to get three, necessarily three driving individuals in, into a unit of that nature. So one and a half per dwelling unit is the, the route that we're requesting.
You're proposing these are small apartments?
Relatively, yeah.
How many units are there?
There are eight buildings and twenty units, per building, a hundred and sixty units.
And, and what did your analysis show when you took it down to two parking spaces per unit?
Can, can you say that again, please?
What did your analysis show when you took it down to two parking spaces per unit versus one and a half? I mean, from three, you went from three to one and a half. I presume you, that was driven by something. Did you try from three to two?
Uh, part of that is the, the site layout and being able to accommodate the, the parking and necessary counts that you would need for commercial development as well. And so the, we would definitely, wouldn't want to reduce the commercial because that would be the driving factor for the parking. And so you're left with being able to look and evaluate, can we go from a, a three? And what would that reasonable number be per unit? Additionally, the thing I want to mention as well is that each of these are anticipated having a, a first-floor garage as well associated with them. So, um.
Can that make a difference?
I, I, if I can just clear something up, I know in our report, um, the, the applicant is seeking a divergence to allow for the apartments because this is, they are applying in a plain commercial district. So apartments is not a permitted use in commercial and they are seeking a divergence for that.
And that's, thank, thank you, Ms. Sherrill. And there's no difference from what we're proposing than what was proposed on, on Evans Farms, on, on Lewis Center Drive as well. That was the, the model and the template that we were using and looking at and, and trying to, to replicate here to some degree. So we know that that's already been submitted and approved and reviewed by you. And that's something that we're trying to be able to propose as well as part of this development.
And that, that's correct. And that's because we don't have a mixed-use zoning currently. So, um, when we were working with the applicant prior to the submittal, we suggested that to file this round.
Um, thanks Dustin. Uh, so I will say, obviously without having regional planning, there's still a lot left that, you know, we, we need to do before, you know, any kind of determination. But, um, trying to keep, you know, the nature of, of what's being requested a, at a high level here. Um, I, I, I hear what you're saying about the parking in regards to the multifamily. Um, but I, I would say that, you know, you, you guys are somewhere in the, in the range of forty-plus percent, forty-five percent maybe a green space, open space. And I think the requirement's twenty percent. And just looking at this plan here, you definitely have the room to add additional parking spaces. Um, you know, I, I think that if, you know, I'm looking at, and I don't know if these, these buildings are labeled or, but the, the two buildings there down by the retention pond B, um, you know, there's, there's no guest parking really near those, those units themselves. I, I know that you mentioned that there's garage parking for those units. But, um, I, I guess what I would like to see, um, is if there was a way to possibly rearrange, you know, or reconfigure this area to where maybe you could pick up some extra parking spaces in there. Um, and in doing so, you could possibly get that top, um, northwest building there, building eight maybe is what it, it's labeled as, out of that right-of-way and, and maybe get that thirty-foot, you know, closer to the fifty-foot requirement. Um, and I'm just saying that because there seems to be some green space. I know you have a, you know, a creek and some other things you're working around there, restrictions. And I think there's a wet lens up in that area, I believe, or, or something from a previous map you guys submitted. I, I don't recall, but, um, i- if there was a way to maybe pick up some extra parking there to get closer to the three, um, and, and also, you know, to see if we can pull that one building out of that and maybe be able to get some space back in that right-of-way. I, I'm, and this is just thinking out loud because I'm looking at this layout and I, 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 I get the, the reason behind it. I'm just saying if, if there's any opportunity to do that, it would be appreciated, I think, by the entire board. Um, and it, for those two comments. Um, and then, you know, I know we talked about this before. So there are some, um, references to adjacent properties, you know, um, mostly which have been approved through a, a prior zoning, um, process. And, and even zoning, I think text, we, at some of those may have been under a different zoning text. So I, I will say the direction now is, you know, certainly trying to get away from that. I, you and I, you know, spoke in our la- in the last meeting about the lighting height and, and I certainly understand it. Um, you know, we, what you don't want to do is, I mean, be under your parking because you're adding a bunch of islands. I, I understand that. Um, if there's any way to, to try to improve that, um, you know, the heights of those lights would be great if, if there was. You know, if there was a way to maybe add a couple more islands in, maybe not, and still meet the parking requirements for, you know, the wholesale, but bring those lights down so you can get, I mean, I, I don't believe, maybe that was one of your comments, Jeff, that we don't have a photometric plan. I mean, just to be able to see that, you know, what our light values are, I think would be helpful to at least start that conversation. Um, and then as far as the signage goes, I, I just, the signage height is, is, is extreme, I guess. And, and I know it's exactly what, I mean, it's less than what, you know, is at the Walmart there. But I think that if there's any way to bring that down, um, from what's being proposed. Uh, you know, I, I remember you commenting that, you know, obviously driving down US twenty-three at the speed, if you were to have it at the height of what the code says, you'd, you'd pretty much pass the sign or something along those lines, which I certainly understand. But I think that if there was a way to compromise on that a little bit, just because of the height, it's, um, I think that also would go a long way and be appreciated. But, um, those are extensive my comments. Um, again, just keeping it kind of a high-level conversation at this point until we get all the reviews completed and everybody's comments. Sierra, anything?
Nothing additional from me.
Okay. Bless.
Just a note on the, uh, because I recognize that, you know, some of these, uh, perhaps the Walmart and others were done under another set of rules or what have you. But I, I appreciate at least you bringing to our attention what is the current, what you see out there. Because I think when you're talking about, I mean, thinking relative, competition-wise or what have you, it's going to be next door to the Walmart and so forth. It makes sense to say, hey, it's what they got. Can we get the divergence on that as well? So at least I appreciate you bringing that to our attention and that certainly, uh, as, as much as possible come in, come in line and see what that, what that looks like. But at the end of the day, um, certainly that's what the proposed divergence request is. It says, hey, comparatively speaking to others, this is what it looks like. And so that, that's valuable to me from a perspective of, of what you're asking. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
What was the reference you made again? I'm sorry, for the light height? You made a reference to other commercials?
We went out and took, took pictures of, of somebody standing next to Kohl's, Meyer, Giant Eagle and Walmart. And, and those, we put the pole right on the, the top of the concrete base. And the concrete base is two and a half feet above finished grade. And it wasn't even reaching the luminaire. So they're, they're thirty-plus feet as well. And, and that's what, that's exactly what we're proposing as part of ours.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board?
Well, I think the other one was, it first was, was the setbacks. I was looking for those here, the drawings and the, because I really want to see those. Those setbacks you were talking about on Orange Center Drive, going from.
If you look on page three, there should, there's an, an exhibit that should have the setbacks on that, on that. There should be one exhibit before there, not the colored one.
Not this one?
Yeah, it should be, yeah, that one right there.
Are you talking about essentially, well? Are you talking about just those apartments here all the way to the north?
Or should be setbacks?
Because, because you got the retention pond there goes around. Okay. I see there's that thirty feet.
Those are called out clearly. We'll list those instead of showing them with labels. We'll also list those for, for clarity.
Uh, from staff side, I mean, there's no setback shown from the north property line. You have the thirty-foot setback along Orange Center Drive. They show a property line. And then there's no building setback or parking setback from the north property line. Or from the east, they show a parking setback, but no building setback from the east property line. There's nothing from this north property line that tells you what the setback is from here down. Or from, they show the parking setback here, but no building setback the east side.
Thirty-foot setback building, right?
We'll, we'll show those and label those appropriately. We'll also itemize them out so that you can clearly see the setbacks both on the right-of-way, the building, the parking from each of the property lines. And we'll, we'll put that either in a table or, or some bulleted list on that exhibit.
Okay. Yeah, there's a lot of details to go through.
Yep.
And then those out parcels are intended to be retail or, or some, something of that. Is that correct?
Retail commercial.
Retail commercial.
Restaurant.
Restaurant, okay. I was just making sure that was still the, the plan there.
I, I do have a few questions for you with respect to some of the comments that were provided. If I could get some clarity on those.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one is that, and one gentleman made, or, or somebody made a comment about not installing or proposing a path along US twenty-three. Uh, that, that was also something that I believe the last time that we met with the township, the township specifically requested the pedestrian connectivity along there. Um, do you mind, you know, to provide maybe your stance on, on that currently? Are, are you in favor of not installing the pedestrian connectivity along US twenty-three? I will suggest right now that the, the southern property does not have anything. It would be tying into nothing. Furthermore, there, the, the right-of-way along US twenty-three north of our ride-in, ride-out is a guard rail because it, there's a culvert that goes under there to provide for the ditch. So there is no pedestrian connectivity a- along there as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm strongly in favor of being able to, to remove that as well in compliance with the Delaware County Engineers Office. But the only reason why it was shown to currently was because of a previous conversation.
Yeah, that was, that was under the overlay district and, and having that connectivity was, was part of that. And obviously now that we're not under that, it, it's.
We can, we can work with the county engineers on that.
Yeah.
Exactly. I think Delaware County Engineer is going to take precedence over that. I think when this first came up, we were all still thinking, as we typically do, about having walkable communities because Evans Farms has influenced lots of what goes on. We really like it a lot. This isn't in that category. It's a whole different thing, which is fine. Have to deal with it, but I, I think Delaware County Engineering is going to.
Okay. In, in lieu of that as well, there's the other comment that was made about providing connectivity to the west side of Orange Center Drive. Uh, I would suggest that a mid-block crossing anywhere along that road on our property is, would not be a safe one because of the nature of the curvature and the site distance that would be provided along there. You do have, um, a path on the east side that is being proposed. And if that path can go all the way up to the intersection with hidden ravines, you could cross over at a safe intersection, at a four-way, uh, intersection. That I would strongly recommend that that would be the crossing, that's the curve to get to the cemetery and not a mid-block crossing with some piano striping.
Yeah, we can get more details from our parks, our operations department. Um, I know his concern was on the east side, I believe, that, uh, just north there, that ditch is fairly steep. I mean, he thinks that might be a deterrent for you to put that in since you're proposing to install that north of your property as well. Um, so I think he thought, he thought the west side had more right-of-way to use. It could possibly be in the right-of-way, uh, and work with the township because that is the township cemetery there.
I, I could speak to that a little bit. Uh, that we are proposing a three-sided box culvert through there, uh, contact system and head wall, wing wall setup. And what we're going to be doing is installing that path on the backside of the curb, you know, to provide a barrier and protection, also a fence so that somebody doesn't fall off the backside as well for safety reasons. So they're, they shouldn't have to go down and up the ditch. There will be no gray transitions. It'll go flush with the roadway. Um, so we'd like to be able to continue to keep that on the east side all the way through that corridor.
Where, where is that box culvert being proposed?
That is going to be going under, directly under the Orange Center Drive extension where it crosses deep run that's located, that runs east and west. So there, there is an existing stream that bisects our northern property line and meanders from the east to the west, eventually discharges, uh, to the west of Alentangie. And we are being, installing a three-sided box culvert in that area to allow that roadway to be installed on top of it. That is something that Delaware County Engineers Office knows about and is reviewing with the plans that we submitted to them.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Bless, did? All right, at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. I will reiterate that, um, please keep your comments to three minutes. And, um, we're going to avoid, you know, duplicate comments. We have received the, um, emails that were sent in, um, prior to the meeting. So thank you for sending those. We have read these. Um, if you, if you feel that, you know, you wanted to come up and just touch on that, that, that's fine. But I will say that if, if someone's already made the comment, then, um, please refrain from doing so. Uh, again, just state your name and address, please, when you come up to speak.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I think it's also worth mentioning, since we have a lot of people here tonight, that the, the commission is not rendering a decision tonight for, for several reasons. One, we don't have the recommendation from Delaware Regional Planning Commission, which we're required by law to obtain. And then obviously you've heard a lot of suggestions. Uh, so, uh, there is going to be revised submittals, but I just want to make sure everybody understands that there's no decision, uh, that's going to be made tonight by this other commission.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to present. My name is Dr. Mark Fixeri. We have the property to the north of, of this proposal. Um, really came tonight just out of sort of curiosity and interest in, in, as well as just a couple slight concerns that we had. One is, and it hasn't been discussed, the ecological impact of the woods and the streamed area, which is a, a really neat little, um, space in the, in, in this, um, hectic retail corridor. And so we're curious about the ecological impact of, of that woods and the stream, both during construction and afterwards. Also, um, you know, we had a, when, when we proposed our building, we had a pretty, a, a wish list that wasn't nearly as long or aggressive as, uh, what, what I've heard tonight. And it is in our, it is in our, um, interest to sort of be, to block whatever progress um, needs to happen or is gonna happen. Um, but we had a pretty good wish list too. And, uh, we came away from this, uh, from our wish list disappointed, but respectful, uh, understanding that, uh, we were impressed at the, the sort of public servant mindset of this group to stick to the guns that they had in spite of our disappointment in our wish list. Um, particularly, we all wanted more signage. We'd love to have a nice temperature and time and temperature because people are going fast down the road. temperature and time and temperature because people are going fast down the road and it, and it would be nice for folks to know that we were there. And, and that was shut down pretty quickly. And, and so to go, I guess I, I, I would be curious about the sort of fairness about our wishlist versus, and I know we're a small family-owned business. The oldest of our seven children is the dentist in that office. And we don't have the, the, the power of, of this, this type of developer, but we had to go, go back from our wishlist and respectfully understand what the code said. And we went to great pains to stay within that code. And I, I remember coming to the one meeting, I said, well, if we get, if, if, if we have to change stuff again, I, I think we're fatigued with the process and we'll, we'll understand that we're really not wanted. But then, then you all made suggestions about how we respect the cemetery. And, and we, again, we left with more homework to do, but, but it was the right thing to do. Y'all did the right thing. And so, you know, again, my, my purpose was, was to be here to learn and be curious. But I couldn't help but step up and say, you know, what's kind of fair? It's fair. Can we come back with our wishlist again if the rules have changed? And I do think that there's a lot of, you know, particularly the signage, we'd all, again, we'd all like more signage, but I think there's a lot more retail congestion as you get towards Powell and Polaris Road. I think there, there is some sense of residential on, by our corner. And I'm guessing that's what some of these, where some of these folks live. And, and it would be nice to, to, to respect that. Thank you for your time and we appreciate what you all do.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else wishing to speak tonight?
My name is Pamela Millie. I live in the condos right along eighty-two sixty-eight Copper Top Lane, Lewis Center. I live on the, what we call a pond. Yeah. We paid a lot of extra to live there too. And I would like for everyone to understand that this is a huge investment for us. Our condos, our homes, and anything that affects that can affect our investment. Before I go any further, I'd like to ask if masks are required in Orange Township?
They're not, no.
They are?
They are not. It's recommended.
Well, the stores around here require them. Looking at the map, I don't understand by the retention pond A. It looks not, not this picture, but it looks like there's going to be a road behind retention pond A. Yeah, right there. Is that going to be a new road behind retention pond A?
That, the orange town, the Orange Center Drive, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah.
That, that'll be connecting to the existing street stub that goes to the north of there. Is, is what's being proposed? Go back to that, to the auditor. So that it'll be a connection right there at that road stub.
Going where? Yeah, going down there, but it looked like from the other view that the road is going behind retention pond A. Am I seeing that wrong? And if so, how close is it to our retention pond?
I mean, we'll, so if you want to state your questions, then we can have Mr. Doherty address them all at once.
That's my question. Is there going to be a road behind retention pond A? And if so, how far from the pond? And if I'm misreading it, how much space do we have between our pond and this new development? Because I know that we own part of the property that's south of the pond. Okay. I don't remember how much, but we do own some of that tree.
Can you scroll up on that map or on the one you just had up, Joe? So if, if this helps at all, if you can.
Does that black line indicate something?
Can you scroll up on that? Okay. So your, your property is, is right, is one of these units, because you're saying you're backing up to the pond. There's Copper Top Lane, right there.
That's where I live.
Okay. So your pond is not shown here, but it's going to be just to the south of your, your apartment up there, your condo. So what, what you're asking is, is there a connection or is there a road behind that pond? You're, you're saying retention pond A, but that's a new retention pond being proposed. The one that is existing now behind your place is shown right there where his cursor is. So it's, it's not on this map, but that's, the, the continuation of Orange Drive will not encroach on that at all. There, the, I think your question was how far will the building be from that pond? I don't know if Dustin's going to have an exact number for that, but I mean, there, you can see that it's, it, it's a good distance there. So we can let him answer that though, when, when it's his turn to speak again.
Are there any plans to plant especially evergreens along between the cemetery and retention pond A? There are some trees along there, but there are some of us here who live on that retention pond. And that's what we see when we look out the window. And we're going to get with this new development, we're going to get more dirt from traffic, more noise from traffic. So I think that lining that with pine trees of a significant size would help with those two problems.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
You guys know me, I'm never silent. Cheryl Gowan, five-nine-six Chardonnay Lane. I live in Hidden Ravines, or Hidden Reserve, sorry. I have heard mention about access, and I didn't see anything on the plans, but I've heard access to the new, to the new proposal from Highfield. Is that walking? Is that driving? What is that? I mean, is it?
It is, it is south of the Chiller.
Yes, south of the Chiller.
So they have a proposed entrance right now, just south of the Chiller that would connect to the Anchor Store.
What, is it driving or walking?
It'd be driving, yes.
Okay. That, that was my question. Is it driving or walking? And because of that, that'll increase traffic on Highfield. Are you looking to widen Highfield?
Based on our conversation with Engineers Office, they are not expecting to widen Highfield. That is part of the conversation that the County Engineers Office and the Operations Department had discussed. If they could get this access to have an easement with Walmart's access on that north part, then have up here on the plan. So they'd have their access here coming off of Highfield where Walmart's northern.
Right.
And then they would come in here and then come up north and then get rid of this access that they're proposing. Is what the Engineers Office and the Operations Department have asked if the applicant would be willing to look into that.
Okay. And so because of that, then I hear a lot of talk about walkways coming from the north down to that property. Will there be walkways on Highfield down to that road to cut across?
Not currently. There's no.
So there's no plans for that. Okay. And I know you've talked about signage, but just a quick comment on that. We seem to be able to find Menards just fine. And environmental, we just put in Turkey Hill Tanks Underground. We've got UDF Tanks Underground. We've got Myers Tanks Underground. We, you know, do we need more underground? Don't know.
All right. Thank you, Cheryl. Any other comments?
Maureen G. Lovell, two-three-four Summer Tree Way, Lewis Center. I just want to comment on another gas station. That is the absolute last thing we need. So why y'all think you have to build a gas station on every piece of property is beyond me. Thank you.
Okay.
Ron Fox, four-two-four Summer Tree Way. Is there going to be a light at twenty-three with the extension?
The proposed, it will be a ride-in, ride-out.
Ride-in, ride-out.
Yep. Off of twenty-three, it'll be a ride-in, ride-out.
But I'm just saying, this whole plan relative to the safety of everybody that lives in this general area is totally backwards. I mean, from a safety standpoint, trying to get out Hidden Ravines on twenty-three is a joke right now. You're going to add all this density into it? But I'm just suggesting you take a look at, see if safety is a factor or money's a factor. I prefer safety.
Thanks, Ron. I, I will say, because just Ron did kind of touch on that a little bit, and this is not for against anything that you're saying. You know, we, Jeff stated at the beginning of this meeting that there is a traffic study that was conducted. Just to give a little background to that. So the traffic study is, is going to determine a trip count of how many additional cars it's going to, this, this type of development would generate. And within that study, it's going to, it's going to determine if, if these access points are adequate, if, if, you know, as you mentioned, lights are going to be required, if, if, you know, it fits the property and that's what is, is showing up in the numbers. Those are the type of things that will come out of this study. We haven't seen that. It's currently being reviewed by Delaware County. So you're, I will just say that, you know, your concerns are heard and, and, you know, we'll, we'll look forward to reviewing that as well.
Hi, Melanie Free, one-nine-seven Chardonnay. Just a couple of questions. There's quite a few retail spots in our general area in twenty-three that are empty. And I don't know what the square footage is BJ's going to be, but there's a big giant eagle empty spot that, you know, didn't know if they considered occupying that. Also, there's, you know, several little restaurants and whatnot. So I don't know if they have to have another gas station, but they might be able to. Some of those. But my big question is, as far as the apartment. You guys mentioned seven hundred square foot, one and a half car parking. I don't know that I've ever lived in seven hundred square foot, but maybe I'm just fortunate. Are those just like one-bedroom apartments or? Anyway, that's my thought. And are they, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this, but are they low-income housing? How many floors are those? Are they three, four? No. Those are my questions. So, and that is because I own and it's an investment, like the other person said. And I pay, you know, taxes. And some of us that have been here have been paying taxes for thirty years in this area. So, you know, we'd like to kind of feel good about living here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the public before we close the comment? All right. We will close public comment. Dustin, if you want to respond to some of these comments?
Thank you. I can address some of these comments. The first one I'll address is the ecological and wetland impacts. If you don't mind going to the northern property line.
Pull the mic up.
If you don't mind going to the northern property line, I can address some of the ecological impacts that are occurring and help. A lot of people understand our proposal. So as you can see, along the northern property line, it's completely blank. Now, right now, if you want to pull up the aerial view, you know, that, that might be a little bit better as well. There's existing multifamily residential right there with a pond behind it. And then on the backside of that is the property that's owned either by the homeowner association or the multifamily. Furthermore, you've also got a corridor of, of woodlands and landscaping that happens behind the dentist's office. So we're not touching any of that. We're, we're not going to be impacting any of that. All of that'll stay. Now, that buffer from the backside of even the lot line of the multifamily to our property line i- is upwards of almost two to three hundred feet. Additionally, on our property, as I mentioned previously, from the east to the west, there is deep run. There is a stream that runs along the, that property line. And in accordance with the, the Ohio EPA and regulations with the general permit, that there's a setback along there. We will not be proposing to do any impacts along there. We're not taking trees down along there. We're not doing grading along there. So if you don't mind going back to our, yes, that's, that's deep run. And we're not touching that or anything setback from that. If you don't mind going back to our proposed improvements. So you can see that we are, we are proposing improvements, just parking eighty feet setback from that, that stream and that property line. So there will continue to be the existing trees, foliage and landscaping that's there currently, and that'll continue to be proposed to remain. The other ecological impacts that are occurring on site have gone through the, the correct permitting process through the Army Corps of Engineers and Ohio EPA with both four oh one and four oh four permits. And in fact, those programs and permits are set up in place so that you take these really, really bad inundated wetlands that may be on site that were only there because of the lack of development or dams that were happening because of development around the property that, that caused water to pond on our site. And what you do is you impact them and you pay an in lieu fee to a program that creates a fifty, sixty, hundred acre wetland somewhere else that's got much better water quality and is a much better feature and amenity. So those are being taken and permitted appropriately. So those are all being handled according, accordingly. You know, when it comes to the, the distance for reforestation, the tree impacts, we already covered that. There is going to be screening that is proposed all along the east side and, and the north side as well, in addition to what we're not touching. The, I can't really speak to the widening of Highfield, but I can say that that road was originally installed and proposed in its width with the right of way to be able to accommodate the development in the area. So that, that was originally proposed and, and put in with the understanding that the density and the uses in this area were already accommodated with that road. The the light at twenty-three in Hidden Ravines, just to touch on that. Part of the traffic impact study that's being evaluated is again, much like Highfield was installed to be able to accommodate the, the development in the area. So, so was US twenty-three at that intersection. That intersection was installed both on Hidden Ravines on the east and west and US twenty-three in the north and south to, to be able to allow traffic in the area to funnel through. We are evaluating that signal. There is a signal there and there's a signal at the Walmart North Point entrance to the south of our property. So there are limiting regulations for being able to install a signal on our property. And that's therefore the reason why ODOT and the Department, Delaware County Engineers Office is proposing a ride-in, ride-out. So we are in compliance with them and we're going to be evaluating the timing of that signal at US twenty-three and potentially making modifications so that the turning movements will be safe and that we'll be able to accommodate the, the increases that may occur. But that was already built and designed in a geometric standpoint to be able to accommodate the traffic that would be generated from the area. There is a three-story proposed residential building that we are proposing. They are a mix of one-bedroom or two-bedroom. Another reason why we're requesting the divergence is that we're not proposing a three-bedroom condo. It's a one or a mix of two bedrooms throughout the, the uses there. I think that touched on most of the things I can address at this time. Adam, do you got any further questions?
No, I think you, I think you got them all.
Some of these will be two-bedroom apartments.
Some of these will be two-bedroom apartments or?
That's correct. Yeah, it's a hybrid of approximately half one and half two.
And three-story buildings?
Correct. Three-story buildings with the first floor being a garage.
Okay.
Yes, Jeff, we can do a continuation.
Yeah, we can do a continuation when I set a date and time.
Dustin, based on the, the comments from both the public and Jeff's, their, the staff comments, do you have a timeline on, on when you would be able to maybe address some of these in the drawings or provide some of this?
If I, I read your report correctly, there, the Delaware County Regional Planning Commission's meeting on this Thursday to be able to, to go through those comments.
Yep.
And that is a, a public forum as well that, that we'll be able to be in attendance with, correct? So we'll be able to find out quickly after those comments come in, the impacts and how we can address and turn around those. I know we have already gone through a sketch plan review with them, and they provided comments through that platform at that time. We've, we've addressed all of their comments for that sketch plan, so I, I hope there's nothing new, but I think that would really be the determining factor for me to be able to give you a timeline. I would like to be able to turn these around as soon as possible and be back here and talk to you again quickly.
So, let me see here. Should we just put a date out there?
Yeah, for, so for the zoning commission calendar, currently, the next one will be February eighth, and then the next one will be March eighth. We only have one hearing in February.
We would respectfully ask for the February date if we could.
Okay.
February eighth for, for everybody? We have time for staff to...
Yeah, typically, we would ask for a week in advance.
Not knowing the comments, that may be challenging.
We can do it.
Yep. You want to stick to it?
Yeah.
All right. All right, can I get a motion to, for, Pete, is it continuing?
Motion to continue the hearing.
Is it, is continue?
Continue.
Continue, okay. Continue the hearing for zoning application Z O N dash twenty-one dash zero seven on February, Tuesday, February eighth at six-thirty PM?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made by Mr. McNulty to continue zoning case zone dash twenty-one dash zero seven to Tuesday, February eighth at six-thirty PM, seconded by Ms. Harris. Does voting, Mr. Bahavich?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
All right, motion carries, and then should we move on to the meeting minutes?
Thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Dustin, I appreciate it.
Just so everyone in the audience knows that the, the case will be heard February eighth, will be the next hearing at six-thirty PM here at this location. Feel free to reach out to me if you have any other questions or comments in the meantime.
I'm sorry?
Heard the website, no. Heard the website, no, it's already called. We don't have that address, do we?
Brad, do you have the address?
They, they, they do have a website, Delaware County Regional Planning Commission, but it's, it's in the city of Delaware. They hold it in the, if you know where the county auditor and county recorder's office is at, the newer building that sits across from the old courthouse, there. Yep.
were not completed. They were in the draft folder, but they were not completed yet, so we'll not take any actions on that set of minutes.
I thought we weren't going to, I thought our minutes now were, because everything was recorded, we weren't going to have to vote on them anymore. Am I missing something?
These were past ones that were still being written out, and then the other one's just a journal.
Okay.
Would be the newer version.
All right, great.
All right, so we'll start with September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, meeting minutes for zoning application Z O N dash twenty-one dash zero five, Evans Farms. Oh, and Z O N dash twenty-one dash zero six as well. Any comments to the minutes?
Nope.
No comment.
Nope.
Staff had no comments.
Okay, can I get a motion? Oh, minor amendment, okay. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one in relation to Z O N dash, or twenty-one dash zero five and Z O N twenty-one dash zero six, Evans Farms?
No, she no.
Go ahead.
Second.
A motion made by Ms. Harris to approve September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one minutes for zone dash twenty-one dash zero five and zone dash twenty-one zero six for Evans Farm and minor zoning resolution amendments, seconded by Mr. McNulty. Does voting, Mr. Bahavich?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
All right, we'll, we'll skip over the September twenty-eighth until those are completed. November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one organizational meetings, any comments to those?
No comments.
No comments?
No.
Staff?
No comments.
Can I get a motion to approve the November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one organizational meeting minutes?
Removed.
Second.
A motion made by Mr. Pierce to approve the November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one organizational meeting minutes, seconded by Ms. Harris. Does voting, Mr. Bahavich?
Yes.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yeah.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, old business. Update on the zoning resolution re-rate.
Yes, staff met with the zoning consultant and also their subcontractor MS consultants last week, discussed some proposed zoning districts for the new text. We are working with them to set up a schedule for meetings for the, meeting with the public and also having stakeholder meetings to go over proposed text. We are meeting with them in March to go over zoning map changes and questions that they have, to make sure we have all the parcels included. But we are working out our game plan for the rest of the year.
Are any of those including the zoning staff? Or is there anything that is upcoming that includes?
Not immediately, but we will be including zoning commission and BZA throughout the process.
Okay.
Jeff, we're supposed to, and maybe, I don't recall this, did we ever meet with them?
We have not met with them yet. We've been, kind of got delayed at the end of the year, so then we've kind of...
Yeah, is that going to be, you know, I know you guys are making progress, but is it going to be an opportunity for us to meet and greet and kind of see what their thoughts are and, and, you know, provide some of our own?
Yeah, so they wanted to meet with staff first with our thoughts on the current code. So we did a lot of, we had staff meetings, went over the code page by page and what corrections we thought we should make. And they are proposing amendments in different zoning districts, and they're working on writing that text now. Once they get that text written, then they'll work on getting feedback from stakeholders, which would be the zoning commission and BZA.
Yeah, I just thought we were going to meet with them before they began that process. I thought that was part of the original, hey, once we, once you, once they were selected, I thought we were having a meeting with them before all the, getting to the nitty-gritty, but it sounds like that is well underway already.
Yeah, they, they, with the COVID, they just kind of decided to kind of go with staff first, and then they'll, they're working on the plan.
Can, can, can they at least have a representative or someone maybe to just come and give us some, you know, maybe at our next meeting or whatever, five, ten minutes, or even via video or whatever, to say, hey, this is what we're working on, this is what we're delivering, and this is where we are, and show us where, where we are in the, I think we had an outline right of the steps, and they can communicate to us what are the steps and where we are. I think that would be fruitful for us, have some insight.
Yep. Yep, we can reach out to them and see if we can get them, get somebody here.
Yep. Any other, I guess, comments or things to discuss?
Nope, that's all that we have.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.